Thank you. I didn't want to like tee up that one. Patalco?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Swan?
Here.
Tolber? Excuse, he notified us. And Wilson?
Here.
Excellent. We have a little agenda, we have two public hearings. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt said agenda?
Seconded.
Motion seconded, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Huzzah. We also have minutes from the last meeting from May 1st. Any comments, revisions, or questions about the minutes? Yes, no, alright. And then can we get a motion to approve said minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Swan?
Second.
Second by DeSenzio, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None. Alright. So do we have any communications or announcements?
No communications or announcements today, no.
Okay. I guess with that, we can get right into the public hearing then. PC 2025-03, special use permit, request for a rooming house at the existing dwelling at 1303 Lake Street.
Alright, thank you, Chair Patalco. The first case in front of the planning commission tonight is the first of two special use permit requests. The photo here in front of you is 1303 Lake Street. It's that White House on the left there, and you're looking down Lake Street easterly. So, if you can move it forward, Beth, to the next slide. So, this request, it's in the RM 15 Zone District. It's about an 1,850 square feet, single-family home built in about 1904. Looking at the records, the house looks like it was vacant up around 2020. There were some permits pulled in the years after 2020, some plumbing mechanical. And then the current applicant purchased the property, a company called Housing Now LLC. And they finished, or you know, they finished doing the renovations on the property, and applied to have it certified as a rental when the house was vacant. I don't recall, it was sold, whether it was owner or rental before. But before you start putting people in there, you apply for a rental registration. And this one had a lot of nuance between a single-family home and a rooming house. It can look very similar. So when this one was applied for, it was listed as a single-family house. Got through the inspection process, and the housing inspector, you know, housing inspectors are looking at life and building safety and international property maintenance code. So they checked with the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator reached out to the owner, Maurice Galladay, and realized it was set up as a rooming house. So that initiated reapply, and then that required the special use permit in the RM 15 Zone District. So now that that property, it has its rental certification with the condition of obtaining this approval to make the land use valid. So, yeah, once that was applied, and a lot of the stuff was set up there, or some of the items related to the housing, you know, addressed, the special use permit is broad. And then, again, in the application, or in the staff report, I put the definition. This rooming house is set up for six unrelated adults. Generally, I would say, a way to describe that, you're occupying a room, and there's one kitchen and a number of unrelated adults. It's kind of in the weeds, it's a very common rooming situation. But sometimes I find with citizens, or to help explain that nuance. Next slide, please, Beth. And here's the zoning map, so we have the next series of maps there. You can see that's Lake Street, and the corner street is a road called Linton. And this is, over there to the west, you see the little commercial corridor of Mills and Lake Street. And further east, it starts to turn more industrial. So the setup and the remodel work of the house, it looks and blends in a lot with the properties around it. And the zoning is all residential around it, so the land use is consistent. And the next slide, please. And this here is the current land use, and that reflects a lot of the residential density here, with the commercial corridor and the occasional vacant lot. The weird live-work parcel in that blue part there is a railroad right of way, so that's why it shows up weird there. And the next one, please. And just here are a couple of photographs. Here's a photo from the corner, looking at the dwelling itself. And, next photo, please. And then here are the views down the side. That's the sidewalk down Linton Street, highlighting the residential nature. And this is a photograph of the side yard where the driveway is. Staff put a, recommended a condition on this one. This one getting a little bit into the weeds of driveways, parking surfaces, and all of that. Very interestingly, the city code gives, outside of the zoning code, a lot of leeway for existing driveways. So, visiting the site and working on the application, I noticed that the Southern Moore driveway was recent gravel. And then you have an old garage cement pad and a rough gravel dirt driveway that leads to a cement pad. But clear evidence, it's used as a driveway, it has a very rough approach. So the staff recommendation was to solidify and get, put surfacing down to define that driveway better. On occasional conditions with the six occupants, sometimes there's a few cars there. And then with six occupants, assumed there could be more drivers. It could help avoid people parking on the grass if someone's in the way or something. So, that would be a simple paving permit, and it could be gravel, asphalt, anything like that. So that was the only condition that staff saw in this one. And you can see the large yard there and the ample space. And for vehicles or public safety response, there's no fences, no barriers. So for that increased intensity of the use, you know, whether it's utility servicing, emergency response, or managing the higher population density, the property's well-suited for it, in staff's opinion. And the next slide, please. Alright, and for this one, I condensed the criteria. Number of the criteria related to, does it have utilities, adequate public safety, does the development standards and layout of the property meet the development requirements in Chapter 6? And those are usually uses have extra standards. A rooming house does not have extra standards in the RM 15 Zone District. And then as a dwelling, there's not landscaping requirements either. So, in a sense, you see how the core, the code will steer it to, looks like a house, acts like a house. And again, this property is a very cozy-looking home. So, through all of that reason, staff found that all of the environmental impact, road capacity being on a corner, ingress egress with the driveways, large porches, multiple entry points, that it aligns with those of special use permit. As far as access, that highlighted in number 6, the request for the improvements to the driveway. And then even in addition for accessibility, it has improved sidewalks, there's a bus stop just down the way. So this property can serve a broad population, is centrally located. And knowing the most recent housing report, rooming houses, multifamily, you know, there's a demand for those in the city. And it's a property where it's already in line with our housing and codes beforehand. So, all of that to say, the staff recommends approval of special use permit, with the condition to define the existing second driveway on site. And that could be as simple as gravel, or just getting a paving permit to improve that driveway. And that is the report. The applicant, Maurice Galladay, is here. If you want to give any presentation, or he's here available for questions as well.
Alright, thank you. I did have a question, although it may be more of a staff question. The recommendation for the driveway, is that binding, or is that just sort of a recommendation?
Great question. It is a recommendation. I mean, if I put my coat hat on, it is a driveway, although unimproved. However, I think to the casual observer, okay, I can park here or there. And typically, how would we administer that, if staff can check up on it? I would put in the approval letter, the condition to obtain a paving permit within one year of the approval date. And even related, the housing inspections, look at vehicle parking and surfaces. So it was just one of those, I see an opportunity because there's extra cars, and it was a recommendation because I saw the two driveways.
Okay. But if a bunch of the residents actually don't have cars, and the owner doesn't feel it's necessary, it's not, it's not a, it's like I said, it's not necess- I mean, it makes sense as a recommendation, but it's not necessarily-
I did discuss the details of this condition today with the applicant, so that he understood where it came from and why. So.
I think to go to your question, though, like, the recommendation is to us to put a binding condition on our approval?
Correct.
Was that your question?
I guess. I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if the staff's recommendation is what made it, if it was binding, or if it was-
Oh.
I guess I wasn't sure how that, part of that worked with this-
Yeah. Well, in full transparency, that's the staff recommendation, you could approve it without any conditions. Is your, are your options. However, again, the housing ordinance could address the surfacing material, but I just thought it came through, it's been looked at by everything, and maybe this is just one way to make sure the driveway's covered. I know that in zoning administration, follow-up on vehicle parking complaints outside of driveways. And there's just a recipe there where I could kind of see innocently, what's the driveway, what's not. And I felt it would be really easily solved if gravel. When I spoke with Mr. Galladay earlier, I noticed the driveway is all gravel, it's rather new, so.
Okay.
It was kind of an idea as well.
Bobby, a question. Six people, six rooms, correct?
Correct.
So, a baby? Yes, no?
That is a good question, and that dives into, I don't have the answer sitting here, whether the rooming unit can be occupied by a roomer or a legal family.
Okay, here we go. And of course, that's a question leads to all kinds of hypotheticals of how we manage that. You're using, of course, in our case, with this idea of what's happening with student housing. And if we do try and sub-advise enforcement, it's a very, very difficult thing. So, can I bring your thoughts about that?
That is a great question. So, with its first rental certification, this property's been issued a 28-month certificate. What a 28-month certificate means, the housing department has walked through there, and it meets the code. So within 28 months, the owner would be notified to renew their certificate if it's still a rental. And when they walk through that, they would have, keep in mind, the updated rental registration application was to ensure it matched the language. So we have an application with six people. And all of that to say is, there is a regular, whether it's 24 or 48-month, for the really, I forget, there's a longer one with a property that usually passes. That gives, because it's also the city inspected, it's not state inspected. This is one where I felt a lot of the density or hypotheticals are addressed, because it's monitored and approved by the city already for habitation.
I mean, I support the idea, the complexity comes with trying to regulate relationships overnight. I'm not a talent. Stay for a week, how does that work? Which could increase density of vehicles also.
Sure.
All kinds of, so I'm curious about, you know, of course, we run into this, we start with nothing different. How would we, if we had intentionality around six rooms, six people?
Yep.
How would you monitor that enforcement?
You are correct with enforcement, and my background, I used to be zoning inspector. So I could give a little bit of a background of, hey, what if? Typically, you know, we receive many complaints for many things. And occupancy is, there's a little bit of tact there, like who lives there or who does not. And obviously, we want to be very, very sensitive to not make people homeless. So there, if there's a complaint of over occupancy, it could start with a phone call, a site visit. And maybe if that doesn't work, extra cars on the property. But typically, before the city will cite it, it's looking for some sort of proof to confirm the violation. And all of that to say, between the housing department, we have code compliance inspector, zoning administrator, a very robust housing program with, we're in the range of 20,000 units in the city, high rate of inspection. So all of that to say, there is an operation of code enforcement within CPAD, which I think is a good, these things don't get approved, and nobody checks on them in 10 years.
But can we say, could we comply further than here?
No, because if somebody inspected it through the inspection certification, and there's extra beds or extra people. And again, sitting here, I can't say if a rooming unit occupied by a mother and two children is legally any different by a single individual. Absolutely. The applicant, or the property owner-manager who runs the property, Maurice Galladay, would like to say something?
Yeah. Good afternoon. This is, I'm usually on this side of the microphone. I used to be a city commissioner in the city of Ben Harbor. But as far as the parking goes and guests and stuff, guests do park on the street. We, probably been, this rooming house has been about three years. We haven't rented to a parent with a child. Normally, it's single people, working people. We probably average maybe three cars in three years. Half of the tenants don't have cars, so we haven't had any problem. We do have overnight rules and stuff like that for guests and stuff like that. No problems, we haven't had any police reports, police haven't been there. When we put this thing on the market, we normally average about four calls a day for a room. Easy, until I take it off the grid list, so it's been very successful. No problems.
Quick question, follow-up. Interesting to me. Mother and child show up, do you tell them, can't do it?
No, no, I, no.
Yeah, how do, how do we handle that moment?
Yeah, we just haven't had any, we haven't had anybody ask for a mother and child. I've just, like I said, just, all we've had is individuals and stuff like that.
Sorry. I grew up in a family of 10, I thought my-
Yeah. We typically, we don't rent, we advertise it as a rooming house for individuals.
Sure.
And so we don't, we don't rent to couples. We don't, we don't, I mean, we advertise it that way, because then you got more than six people in the house and stuff like that, so. Just individuals. And so far, like I said, we haven't had any requests from a mother and child or a family. So, been working out pretty good.
I have a question about the driveway.
Yes.
As the owner-manager, do you have any concerns about the condition that's being proposed to re-gravel or anything like that? So no concerns about that?
Okay.
I have a quick question, not necessarily related to the zoning or the approval, but how do the leases work with this? Are these on a month-to-month basis, year leases, week? What's sort of the general operation with that?
I have a question, maybe more for Bobby. With the mailing that went out to the surrounding area, was there any comment?
I received one phone call without any opinion on it. The citizen was interested in what the letter was in reference to, and they were familiar with the property. And they just said, oh, thank you, I want to know what it was about. So, that was the only phone call or written communication received.
We did put about, we put about $90,000 in that house, and it's a pretty nice tax bill.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, I guess I will, someone wants to make a motion?
I will move to approve the special use permit for the dwelling at 1303 Lake Street.
Support?
Alright.
Can I, sorry, can I make a friendly amendment? Do we need to include the condition in the motion? Or no?
If it was not in the motion.
That's the motion.
Yeah, the motion stands as seconded.
Okay. Any comment or debate there?
If anyone wants to add the condition, they can move to amend the motion and see if that is accepted.
I will move to amend the emotion, to amend the motion to include the condition to improve any unimproved old driveway areas, to be used, to be defined and improved with gravel, asphalt, concrete, or other approved surface materials.
So that would need to be seconded?
I will second the proposed amendment.
And then you'll vote first on whether to amend the motion. And if it is approved, then that becomes the motion, with the condition becomes the motion, and you vote on that. If it's rejected, then it goes back to the original motion.
So the vote now is to amend the motion, you're not making a decision on the special use permit. Thank you, Attorney Bear.
Alright, do we have to have, do you want any?
Oh, that's me, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna make a comment about the amendment before we-
No discussion?
I mean, personally, I didn't think it was necessary. I was, my only thought was, it makes sense that if you've got a driveway, maybe needs to be a little better defined, but it seemed like it would be more a question of, to the property owner, did they feel, you know, do their tenants need that access? And did they need to do it for their own purposes? But considering the, who might be interested in a rooming house situation, whether they had a car or not, if they, if the driveway or if the area is not at some sort of parking capacity, I wasn't sure it was necessary unless the owner felt it was necessary.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So that was why I had asked earlier, because it did not seem, you know, that, I mean, the recommendation makes sense if there's a driveway, but I didn't think it was necessarily, it should be a binding condition of the, of the special use permit. But I'm happy to vote.
Yes or no?
Alright. So on the amendment, Ardet Baumann?
No.
Curtis?
Yes.
DeSenzio?
Yes.
Kocheva?
Yes.
Patalco?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Swan?
No.
And Wilson?
No.
So the motion is without the condition? Okay. Is it a, it's a tie?
It's a tie.
Yeah. But, what is that? My law's handy.
If it's a tie, then the motion fails.
Okay.
Who likes a tie?
That guy, we keep him around.
I don't want to speak for anyone who otherwise voted for the amendment, but it was not a deciding factor for me.
Especially because the owner indicated he's fine with it. So it's just more about, is it necessary that it's binding?
Yep.
Alright, so on to the, on to the main motion then.
Yes.
Any other debate or questions or comments from the, from the members?
What do we think about this driveway? I'm just kidding.
It's the most controversial thing we've had.
It is.
Alright, hearing no other, yes, sorry, I thought your hand was on it. Then move your hand away from it. Okay, sorry.
Ready for roll call vote?
I think we're ready for roll call.
Ardet Baumann?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
DeSenzio?
Yes.
Kocheva?
Yes.
Patalco?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you for your time. I always appreciate more housing in the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Even if it's a wrong.
Yep. Four calls a day.
Right.
If you want to go to the next slide, Beth, let me get a minute.
So, um, I didn't even ask for public, did we ask for public comment on that? Did we ask for public comment on that item? Did we need to ask for public comment on the agenda item before we voted?
Yes, we did not. Yes. We did not open the special hearing.
Alright.
Yep.
Well, haven't closed that one yet, technically.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's, so. Yeah, that was an invalid vote then, if we didn't hold a public hearing, correct? Just restart.
Why don't we open the public hearing?
So let's, let's see if there's any, any comments.
Apologies.
Yep, sorry, no, my apologies, I should have done-
This, setting up the Ring Central, the application, it is not loading, so phone call, Collins are not an option today. But yeah, if you want to call for public comment, for the public hearing.
Sorry, this is my fault. Sorry, any public comment? No one is hearing, nothing? Alright. Do we need to re-vote then?
Yep, I would ask for somebody to make a new motion. We will just consider the other one, since there is no public hearing, completely invalid.
Okay.
And as Attorney Bear said, we have not moved on from the item, and so yeah, now we've held the, the public hearing was open.
Okay.
Alright. Might want to at least say, like, close the public hearing or something.
So now we'll close the public hearing, and we will take a motion to approve the special use permit.
I motion to approve the special use permit.
Support.
Thank you. Alright. Like we've said-
Alright, so the motion is to approve the special use permit for 2025.03?
Correct.
Michelle, or you were the second?
I was, I made the motion.
Michelle, second.
Yep.
Alright, Ardet Baumann?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
DeSenzio?
Yes.
Kocheva?
Yes.
Patalco?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you again.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Alright, so now we can move on to PC 2025-04, request for a special use permit to construct a 150-foot-tall, monopole-style wireless communications tower to exist the existing lattice tower, 1516 Rockledge Court.
Alright, thank you. The, just for clarification, wireless communication is what the zoning ordinance calls a cell tower. It's different than a private radio communication tower. So I may use the word "cell antenna" interchangeably. So, what you see here is a view, this is a photograph from the applicant. Rockledge is a very short residential street off of Alamo in the northwest part of the city. And as you'll see, or if you may have already learned in your staff report, this tower is in a very, very unique location and has an interesting history. So obviously, it's a residential street, which is a residential zone, which has restrictions on current standards for cellphone antenna, where this one's been here a little bit of a while. You want to hit the next slide, please, Beth? So with this presentation, I'm going to give a background, a little bit of the history of it. And this cell tower and 4.2W, which is the use standards for wireless communication antenna, is very unique in the zoning code, because it might be the only thing in the zoning code. It just sends you right to the section, the use table. So everything is contained in 4.2W to a large extent. So the first thing I wanted to highlight here was, which I think is important to highlight, how did this tower get here? And something that was revealed to me pretty quickly was the unique elevation of this point. And if you zoom out further, I call it, it's like a finger into the valley of elevation. And it's right at the end, and it's heavily wooded now, but you can tell you're kind of sitting up high over there. So, according to the property owner, the origin of this dates back to Bronson Hospital in the 70s, using its position to be able to communicate up high. So I thought the geography was at least something that was important to highlight with what is an unusual circumstance, as far as where the cell tower is and this request in front of us tonight, and the reason why it needed multiple steps, as opposed to other developments. Next slide, please, Beth? So the property 1516 Rockledge is that square right there. There's a single-family home, I believe this one dates as far back as the late 19th century. And there's a garage in the back. And Rockledge itself just kind of dead ends there, just like an open gravel where the road is. And interestingly, in the very northeast corner there- And interestingly, in the very northeast corner there is that 150-foot lattice tower with the mechanical room for the cell tower equipment occupying half of the garage. And between the surveys and all the documentation provided, there is a series of land leases that address the ownership, easements for the improvements, access. It's a long-established relationship between owner and lease there. However, because of its age, it is highly un, not typical. It has one carrier on there. And looking at records, you know, cell antennas are showing up there as late, as early as the 90s. So it, my estimation is it was a communications tower that probably threw some cell antenna on there, maybe before the zoning ordinance was as robust. So all that being said, this has been a known location. And when the application came into the city, a big highlight was the, uh, the importance of this location and the overall network. And I hope part of that story will help explain, one of the abilities in 4.2W that is very unique is if you can demonstrate a need for communication through engineering records and, and make your case essentially that this is at such an important location, waivers should be considered, and this one exercised that because of things like setbacks and stuff. Next photo, please. So again, the different maps to kind of give a highlight of the land use around it. Up over Alamo there is very, very residential. You have the park over there, some large properties, some small property, single-family homes. And you have the large apartment complex over there off of Foxridge Drive. And with the, in 4.2W, it does talk about setbacks from public streets. You'll notice the applicant provided setbacks from Foxridge Drive. You know, we discussed that term "public," you know, whether it was a public right-of-way or not. Roads where people could be driving were all included. We wanted to be as transparent as possible about these setbacks. Where the setback standards in 4.2W are setback from property lines the same distance as the height of the tower. And next slide, please. This is the current land use, again highlighting the, a lot of single-family homes and the increased density of the apartment complex behind it there. Next slide, please. And then future land use kind of highlights this part of the city residential, no large future land use changes. So we've established this is a very residential character part of the city. Next slide, please. So here is a zoom in of an aerial overlaid on, on a site plan. And it is a very busy plan. And as you know through the staff report, there were many, many more engineering documents. Something that was a benefit in this application is, if approved, it would enter the site plan review process where a lot of those final details are outlined. I thought with the amount of information here, it demonstrated a high ability to be able to meet the requirements of site plan. So while I didn't ask for a final landscaping plan, when site plan review, the landscaping, the screening standards are all spelled out in there. So here you'll see the existing residence there to the left. And highlighted in the northeast corner there is, it shows the existing tower location being the triangle. And then you see the circle is the new location. They show the radius of the fall zone. They have an engineer letter that shows how far this would fall in the event of failure. And that's what that red line is. And you'll see some notes there for an easement for construction or an easement there for trucks or service people to respond that have to, about once a month, there's some text there making sure everything works. And being familiar with this tower, even in its more rudimentary residential state, our office isn't familiar of crews not being able to get to it, it's kind of just hidden back there. Where obviously, if approved, you know, the surfacing, maybe a little bit of that, the fencing would all have to be replaced, and landscaping brought more up to, to current standards. And through site plan review is a very heavy engineering and code review where a lot of the details are then confirmed further. And as part of this project with the tower and the engineering letters, I did consult some city staff to, to get an understanding of the engineering and the public safety aspect of it. So a lot of the, the staff background took a lot of that into consideration as well. And I want to highlight as well, so Rockledge just dead ends on the property. The road is the right-of-way right there. And you'll notice to the north and east, and even the south, is the apartment complex driveway. And right there behind it is a roadway that leads to a parking lot. And then there's a multi-unit building behind it. And while not on the requirement for separation, I did want to highlight that, yes, that building is within 150 feet. So we, we do have this tower in a little bit of a crowded area. Next slide, please. So the applicant also included a number of views of the tower of the current and the future. As far as, you know, visibility, the ordinance does lightly touches on, on view sheds, but over, over years, obviously aesthetics are an important consideration for, for the community. And then if you go to the next slide, Beth, you'll see they put in, it almost looks like it's real, what it'll look like with the new tower there. And they also had the Rockledge view, and there was another view from Alamo Street there. And it, you know, staff thought it really showed, it looks almost the exact same. And a little bit of a nuance, by 4.2W, any new tower has to be able to hold a minimum of three. The idea being we're not building new towers, you can co-locate. The current one can only hold one communication facility from a cell company. So secondarily, we would be adding the ability for capacity. Next slide, please. And this was, again, thinking of the view shed, I got up on top of a parking garage there. 519 Willard is a tower that we're very familiar with in, in site plan review, there's a lot of carriers on there. And I thought it would be interesting to highlight, because the Rockledge Tower seems close, but one of those elevation things are the bottom of Rockledge is higher than the top of 519 Willard. So staff also considered, we've got an interesting array outside of downtown. Some of their work supported that. But I also thought of the residential nature, it also highlighted the, the size of that tower of a view from downtown. And I just wanted to add that, I thought it put more context out there. Next slide, please. All right, now as far as the approval steps. The step in front of you today is the special use permit request, because a special use permit is required in an R-zone to build a new tower. Now, I'm sorry, I take that back, you cannot build a new tower in an R-zone. So before this could apply for a special use permit, the applicant reached out to city staff, they had read our code, and they had saw the layout. So they had talked with the zoning administrator, myself. And before the zoning board of appeals application, we looked at what was being sought, what the ordinance required. And quite frankly, this might be the fir, this is the first new tower I've seen in 13 years at the city. And it just happened to fall, all of those things. So we provided the order of operations and the guidance for them. So that was, the zoning board of appeals last month was a use variance to allow a new tower to be rebuilt where they're not permitted in an R-zone. So as far as use, that use has now been granted by the zoning board of appeals. So with that use approved, then staff said, now it's the special use permit, because you are in an R-zone. I don't have it in front of me, but those code sections, it was special use permit, maybe it was 75 feet tall. So that's this one where the, the use requiring the extra scrutiny from the planning commission is this step. Now that city planner waiver I mentioned is a strict administrative exception in 4.2W9. And that one relies very heavily on like the technical feasibility and engineering letters. So in the ordinance, it says the city planner waiver has to be considered and decision made through the special use permit process. So staff provided that, the city planner is granted the waiver. There are enough, I'll go through the waivers that are on there. And if the special use permit was approved, the city planner, we would draft a letter outlining that clearly, what was approved in the minutes for, for the record. As an order of operations, because we have the city planner waiver if not approved, it, it, all four of these are required before they could obtain a permit. So through that review, and again, talking with public safety about 911, city engineering, the, the weight of the plan, that waiver is granted in consideration to the planning commission tonight. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. And I'm just going to pause right there to make sure there's no questions before I go on into the, the approval criteria and the city planner waiver.
Actually, yeah, could you go back to the map? You mentioned the radi, like the, the, there was somewhere there was a red line where there was a radius of the thing fell. It did not look.
Back a couple more?
Big enough.
So, and I haven't gotten to that nuance in the staff report yet. Now, why is that fall zone so small for 150-foot tower?
That's what I was asking, yeah.
I, I've encountered this on other towers, so when this tower fails, or in the event of failure, it's designed to fall in on itself. So that creates, they provided the engineer with a letter, stamp, and an analysis that in the event, here is what would happen. So that is the 16-foot fall zone. And part of the, or part of the application or the request for it was, the fall zone is now within the compound fully.
That's exactly what I was wondering. Okay.
Beck, could you advance a few more slides again, Beth, please? Any other questions?
As far as like the footprint goes, I know it's moving over, but is it taking up about the same amount of space it was before?
The tower itself, yes. Given the age of the equipment, compound is what they call the fenced areas, and the building they're going to use is still going to be in half of the garage. So I would say the tower, no, but that compound would probably look a little more. Right now, it's really overgrown, expect to see new fences, great surfacing, and then any landscaping required around it. So the area around it would be contained within the lease zone or the construction lease zone. So yes, it would look different. However, it looks to be mostly on that property. And I think during site plan review, whether any of those trees had to be removed, because there's some larger trees, certainly a valid concern. However, you know, looking at the distance and all of that through public safety in our building department, if one of them had to go, I, I think it would definitely be highlighted by then. All right. So that was the city planner waiver, which is with the special use permit. Just as a way to look further down if approved, site plan review, that's the administrative review process. Because it is a new cell tower, it requires site plan review. And that is the site plan review committee would approve it before permits are issued. And that's that last step, permits and inspection. So once they get their building permits, it would be inspected and made sure everything was built per plan before it's made into operation. Next slide, please. All right, the city planner waiver. 4.2W9 gives the standards of the waiver. And the, broadly, the criteria asks for analysis of what other sites exist, why you could not find another site, or be able to demonstrate through engineering and communications why this location is so important, even though it, it needs this waiver. I mean, it's important to recognize that the waiver is literally baked into the code. So that's, that's just a little bit of an interesting thing. Where a waiver, you can get a waiver for some other land use this way. The applicant did provide the engineer report, it's in the staff report. There's a letter on top of, you know, the eventual construction plans. And site planner will probably get structural reports. So that stamped drawing with the analysis and the write-up from the engineer is what the city relies on. And, you know, we, we believe that is an accurate letter and statement. Furthermore, you know, the construction team will be working closely with the city if approved in site plan. The, there's a, now, the number of exceptions, you had a number listed for the separations, because it has to be 100, the height of the tower from road and property lines. There's a requested exception for the 150 feet instead of 75 feet, because 75 feet is the maximum height in an R-zone. And why would we have a height if it's not permitted? That's probably addressing existing towers. And then setbacks in all four directions in the roadways less than 150 feet. And those are outlined in the letter. And for the matter of the record, I'll, I'll, I'll read these out loud. So the, from the east property line, the monopole would be 18 feet instead of the 150. The distance from the north property line, which is back towards the apartment complex, is approximately 28 feet. The distance from the driveway to the north, that's the private driveway at the apartment complex, it's 35 feet from that. The monopole was approximately 102 feet from the west property line, that is across from the garage. We added that one just because it was less than 150, weren't sure if that was adjacent or not. The monopole is setback 144 feet from the property line. And again, to be thorough, you'll notice the next one, that we have another one from the Rockledge Court. As shown on the submitted plans, I do have that figure, I can add it to the record, the applicant provided that. And the property line on the south is a different figure than the road right-of-way. So that's why you ended up with seven figures, one to right-of-ways, roads, and adjacent property lines. And even with those figures based off of that, the waiver has been considered approved by the city planner. Next slide, please. Any questions on, on the waiver or the waiver request letter from the applicant and staff's thoughts on that?
Given the elevation there, was it a 75-foot tower? Is that possible? Does it exist? Could it work in this case? Do we know?
Great question. If the current tower is 150 feet, speaking plainly, I would say if they could construct a 150-foot one, they could engineer and design a 75-foot one. Now, the impact to the communications and the ability for that, I, I don't know the difference or impact on that. The applicant may be able to speak to that better than I. Good question. Any other questions on the waiver or consideration? All right, and so here's just a sample of some of the, the documents. There is the letter with the narrative. And we also have the stamped and engineered plans, at least the site plan, and then future ones through plan review. And then as well here, you see these are all of the tower locations in the vicinity. And this tower specifically is about the, the middle one, just under the 131 Drive there. And you see the 519 Willard there closer to downtown. And I think one of the unique things about this tower is, if, if I remember my conversations, you'll notice that gap to the north, where you kind of see it filling in between these, these two wide things. Essentially, the existence of this tower for so long, it's almost like a linchpin, as it was described to me. Next slide, please. I think the next one is a visual of the power of the signal with and without the tower. Yep. So the, the image on the left, about in the middle of the screen, a little bit to your left there, is the location of the Rockledge Tower. Green means very good, blue means good, yellow's fair, and red is marginal cellphone signal. We've all looked for signal, we know what that's like. And then on the right there, you see with that tower, what it fills in and the demonstration of that, that gap per AT&amp;T and their, their team's consideration. Next slide, please. And I, I went, I aimed to condense, I know that the special use criteria is a little more thorough in the staff report, but I'm trying to condense it for the presentation here. So for criteria one, I didn't highlight this probably good enough in the last special use permit request. Chapter eight outlines the criteria to approve, and there's 10 criteria. So the first one is about the compatibility of the special use to the surrounding land uses. And through that, you know, I, the setbacks are not very compatible with a single-family or parcel of this size. That's, the waivers and the exceptions demonstrate that. However, due to the fact that it is a non-conformity, this is a known element. The neighbors are used to it, I've never heard a complaint about it. And its age probably isn't in the greatest condition anymore. And the difference of how important cell phones are just in our own lifetimes, probably from when this code was written. So while out of character, I think between the expert analysis, the geography, and the fact that it is a long-present non-conformity, that while it doesn't align, these are, looking at the communication aspect of it, it's, you know, pretty hidden, given the tree cover, far away. So in far, in regards to items two, three, four, five, and six, that's your utilities, public safety access, ability to comply with your development standards. Within the application, the material provided, they've clearly shown the ability to build the compound to current standards, that they can landscape it, that they have a construction plan to get it in there. So for a lot of those items, everything lined up. And that would also, when you get in there about the environmental impacts, fencing and surfacing, cell towers could have generators, or batteries can have acids in them, and those are very valid concerns for the planning commission. One of the little more hidden things in site plan review is chemical containment, getting a list of what's in there. And we have public safety personnel trained in tower rescue training. So as part of that, you know, whether it's a tech worker or an emergency someone responding to, part of that is the city is notified of what's there, because at certain volumes, you need to contain it. you need to contain it or if it was a fuel generator, you need a way to contain it. So a lot of those nuances, you know, it's probably not in the plans or there's some what ifs there. If approved, all of that is in place before it moves forward. And through the thoroughness of the application, I think the applicant has demonstrated the ability to show that. The city of Kalamazoo reviews, reviewed a lot of cell antenna co-locations over the years, so it's a workflow staff is pretty familiar with. And it would just be the same thing but for a new tower. And I'd be glad to talk more about that in regards to more of the nuance of items two through six. And one of, the last one in those is the street access and capacity. I did speak to our traffic team, Rockledge is a public 66-foot wide road. It looks like there's a deeded easement that covers it across this property and while small and narrow, I didn't get an update on if it's up for repaving in the next five years. However, this tower's been serviced, no problem, the houses, I've spoken to the fire department about it. While it's a small road, it doesn't seem to be generating a lot of traffic and again, as far as road maintenance goes, I'm sure it's on a list eventually to be repaved and I did add, I did ask our tall weed grass inspector to go look out there because the stop sign's covered by trees if you're out there, so. Things like that, so it's, while a small road, I believe that there's capacity and anyone I talked to in the city didn't have a concern. And the tower itself will not require water and sewer, the applicant noted that in their staff report. The dwelling has water and sewer, it's the resident's home. And the south end of the property by a great luck has a fire hydrant, so not, usually cell towers in some weird spots, this one has a fire hydrant in case anything bad happens back there. And the city staff are number eight, related to the items in eight, reference the plan and review the site plan and special use permits if approved. And that's where the final conformance of these standards and I bring that up because of the level of review, my thought was, it's a little difficult for the planning commission, how do we decide that? So, nothing moves forward otherwise and even for the level of this review, they've demonstrated they could definitely produce this information by site plan. And items nine does not apply and the application does demonstrate the ability, kind of as I said a few times, to meet all the rules and requirements of the ordinance, supported through the waiver requests and the ZBA variance. So, that's the background on this one and I'm available for any questions and the applicant, Katie, is here as well and has a presentation as well, she's representing the cell tower company. And if there's any questions, I can answer those before I ask her to come up and speak.
I do have some questions, but does anybody else want to go first? Okay. So I did have a question. So generally, as you said, a cellphone tower would not be allowed in a residential area. Are they allowed in commercial, where are they allowed in the city?
Commercial, industrial and I believe even institutional campus. And I believe the residential ones is, it's for existing towers, like there's something in there because there's old ones, but the standard or all of the 150 feet without, you know, with different setbacks, it's permitted in industrial and commercials much more robustly.
Alright, because I'm also seeing it's obviously adjacent to a commercial zone as well.
Adjacent to?
It's adjacent to a commercial zone as well, yes. It looks like with this PUD that's on the-
That might be the commercial, is it existing land use or future land use? Because I believe it's either-
There's the current zoning for the, and the PUD and the current zoning for the property to the north?
Okay. Yeah, but that's an apartment complex.
Okay.
But again, that's-
I was going to say, what is, what is that, was the question, is what is that?
Oh, yep. Can you hear the area, Beth?
Residential.
It is a residential use, but it shows up as a PUD, so it's some contained development plan.
It says a PUD and a, and specifically a commercial property, but it's, 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 okay. Alright. That was my question. Okay. Any other questions or do we want to, we can hear from the applicant then?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Katie Harms, I'm with Diamond Infrastructure and I am the applicant. And she's going to pull up the presentation. A lot of what I'm going to show today is, Bobby had already shown, but I want to reiterate a couple of points and add a couple of, you know, telecommunications facts in there. So, no, it's, that's still Bobby's. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's alright. Alright. Yeah, you can go to the next slide. So as Bobby mentioned, the tower's pretty old. It's a 53-year-old tower. It doesn't have the foundation infrastructure that's needed for cell tower infrastructure today to upgrade the equipment. So the equipment on there right now is with AT&amp;T. The equipment cannot be upgraded. You guys know, your cellphones are changing every day, you got 4G, 3G, 4G, 5G, who knows, right? The equipment needs to be upgraded. It cannot be supported with the current infrastructure. The foundation there cannot hold any of the equipment that's needed to add to it, as well as adding T-Mobile, Verizon and any other carriers that want to be hopping on there. So you're very limited of what's being allowed on this piece of property. You can go to the next one, please. So, like I mentioned, this tower does not currently meet the engineering standards. It, you know, it's built in 1972. It doesn't allow for upgraded equipment and it does not meet the goal for the city to promote co-location of carriers. Next one. So, what we're doing, like Bobby mentioned, we are replacing it with a monopole. A monopole is a singular infrastructure with the antennas at the top. What we have there existing is almost like a lattice-style tower, so we would be replacing that, moving it about 12 feet to put in the monopole. It would be at the exact same height as the existing tower, but then allowing for other carriers to be on there. I've got a slide here that'll show you the different elevations of the, of the future carriers. You can go ahead and next slide. So in terms of services, like Bobby mentioned, we, you know, we don't need water, we do need power, but we are using the exact same access drive and equipment room and we would only need one service truck per month to get in there and work and do any upgrades that are needed. Next slide, please. You can go to the next one. There you go. So this one shows the kind of a side-by-side elevation piece. The blue tower is the existing tower on the left and then the right one would be the new tower that we would build. You can see in there that we've got it built to hold future carriers, so we can promote those and bring on Verizon, T-Mobile and anybody else that wants to hop on. Next slide, please. And you guys had seen this one previously, Bobby kind of showed this one, but this just kind of shows you the setbacks. This is the survey that we produced for this specific location, just to kind of show you that the tower's going to be moving 12 feet to the right and, you know, there's not going to be much change going on in the lease space. Next slide, please. And this kind of gives you a zoomed-in portion of that fall zone, that 16-foot fall zone. So like Bobby mentioned, the towers kind of crumple in on themselves. You can imagine a straw just kind of folding in on itself. That's how they're designed to hold, the foundation holds strong and it crumples in on itself to allow for that very, very tight fall zone. Does that, do you guys have any questions on that? Okay. Next slide, please. So this is just a letter from AT&amp;T, supporting us in this endeavor. Like I said, they can't, they can't upgrade their equipment and so they can't upgrade their equipment, that affects your phones. And of course, if you don't have AT&amp;T, you don't have coverage in that area anyway. So, next slide, please. And then again, this is the engineered sealed letter discussing the fall zone. Next slide, please. So here's a couple of photo simulations. Bobby had one, I'm going to show you two others, just to kind of show you different angles. You can go to the first one, please. So this is, this is the existing drive into the property on Rockledge. It's a narrow road, but you can see the tower there. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll be able to see kind of just the side-by-side difference. It's practically the same, same thing. Next slide, please. And this is the one that Bobby showed, this is going into the apartment complex from below. If you go to the next slide, you'll be able to see the side-by-side. There you go. And then I have one more location, if you go to the next slide. This one's a little bit further away, this is off of Alamo, so you can see it from a little bit further of a distance and then if you go to the next slide, you can see what it'll look like in the difference. Alright, next slide, please. So we discussed frequency maps and you were talking about, or you had questions about, you know, the adjacent properties and where they're at. Now, what Bobby mentioned is elevation, that tower's sitting up real high, those apartment complexes are kind of sitting down low. So anywhere that you move this tower, you're going to affect coverage. If you lower the height of the tower, you're going to affect coverage because that, it's at that point where it's, imagine almost like an umbrella or a light switch, right? You've got your flashlight. The higher you go, the more it spreads, the dimmer it gets, the lower you go, the smaller your light gets. Just imagine it that way, the more, you know, more spread out, you get more coverage. Next slide, please. And then this is the coverage maps that Bobby showed previously. So, if you're moving any sort of tower, a big question came up on the zoning board is, well, can we go anywhere else? Well, one, you've got to have a willing candidate, you've got to have a willing lease to reach, we've got to go through the same process. North, where that yellow space is, you've got a lot of counties, so it's that you move into the county. And if you go to the next slide, if you move it out of this space altogether, it's going to be a dead zone. You're going to lose coverage completely for all of the residents in that area that have AT&amp;T. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to kind of touch on the demand for wireless within the city of Kalamazoo. Every, you know, the average Kalamazoo resident has a cellphone, you guys probably all have cellphones. And across the nation, over 60% of households have disconnected from landlines altogether. I think my parents are still the only ones that still have a landline. And then we've got medical devices, we've got your watch, your Apple Watch, you know, anything that you need to get medical service or, you know, monitors, any time, real-time sensors that will provide cover, you know, this will help support those pieces of equipment. Next slide, please. So, 85% of E911 calls in the city of Kalamazoo are made by wireless phones. So, we know that in a situation, you're going to grab your cellphone, you're going to make an emergency call. In that area, if you lose that coverage, they're not going to have the ability to make those emergency phone calls. Next slide, please. So the city of Kalamazoo has done really well with promoting their public safety. You guys have a great system set up to allow for, you know, you guys had tornadoes two months ago. That kind of system is very smart, it's up with the times and allowing to have those cellphones work allows this to work. Next slide, please. So, and this is kind of similar, this is the alert notice to the public schools. Next slide. You can go to the next one. And then your social media page. You guys have a good amount of followers, 31,000 followers, so that's almost half your residents, so it's a pretty good following in terms of keeping up with, you know, notices to the community and what's going on next door and this weekend and making sure everybody's up and aware of what's going on in your city. And that, I think, is my last slide, if you go to the next one. Yeah. So, I just thank you for your time and I'm here to answer any and all questions.
I had a question about specifically the construction of the new tower. Has there been, in all the engineering reports, looking into the feasibility and the infrastructure required to take down the old tower, put the new one up? Bobby mentioned it's a very thin road, I don't know about the condition of the surface material there, how big the sections of towers go in and out. Has that been taken into account? Is that something that will come up in site plan?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have, we'll have very much get into detail for site plan review and how we will bring the tower in. And the existing tower, we'll break it down into pieces, just like, you know, any sort of infrastructure, you're going to break it down into individual pieces. And then the tower we would bring in, the monopole is also in sections. And those sections are based on, you know, that crumple piece, you've got to have those individual sections.
I have one and this might be for Bobby. This cell tower mainly covers the north side, right? So without this cell tower, does the north side not have cell coverage?
It does extend in the north side neighborhood and in a lot of Douglas and in some of my communications with public safety, it's a little bit on the fringe, but I thought it was an interesting thing to add with the arena under construction, the exchange, a new courthouse, new buildings at Western. A lot of these buildings need bi-amplification internal for signals, so we have conditions here that aren't accounting for the large concrete structure. So secondarily, yes, it would impact the north side neighborhood, Douglas, Westwood and the township and then, you know, we kind of viewed, I viewed through the report that is, we might need a little more push onto downtown because of the number of people in those buildings and then the buildings themselves that are going to create a different situation in a few years that would probably be caught by those upgrades that were referenced.
Thank you.
Little bit of a tangential question, maybe for either one of you. Who actually owns the land? Who's the-
It's a, it's a private landowner. He was, he was here at zoning, he didn't come tonight, but he's in support of this. And I, and we sent out, I know Bobby's talked to the landowner and-
And his approval was needed for the application.
Alright, yeah, sure. Just curious. A private individual?
Yeah, and there's, it looks like there's leases as well, so it's, sometimes there's some ownership that the tower company may have and they lease it from the owner, so. But yes, the owner of the property is involved as well and needs to be on board, so.
And I didn't see any other like neighbor feedback, is there nobody, I assume it was noticed and all the things were done?
So we sent out notices and didn't get any responses.
I'm a little surprised, but okay.
And there were none from the city notices either.
Okay, alright.
Question. On the coverage map that shows the coverage there, is that like the current coverage or is that, would that be improved?
Yes, so that's the current coverage. So, I'm sorry, I should stop in there. That's the current coverage of AT&amp;T. So we get those, we call them propagation maps. That's what AT&amp;T does and means what the coverage is and so they can tell us where they've got those gaps in coverage. And so they, they were able to show us, that's what's existing with AT&amp;T, without it, you've got, you've got a dead zone.
My only other question would be for Bobby, trying to clarify exactly our role in what we are to be evaluating and approving on as opposed to the city planner or the zoning board of appeals. What is our specific niche in the approval process?
Great question. Is the 10 decision criteria outlined at the end, is the criteria for the planning commission to weigh their decision on? As far as the city planner waiver, use that in support of your decision, so I'm, you may have different opinions about the city planner waiver decision, but it's a nuance, I think, that is important to be considerate of. So, this one has that waiver in place as well and to really narrow it down, it's those 10 criteria. And a special use permit runs with the land regardless of ownership.
This is probably real down in the weeds, but the recommendation is written that the special use permit be approved with the condition that the project obtains site plan approval, but the project has to get site plan approval. Like, that's, that's not connected, like, this is a step in that process, but that happens no matter what. Yeah?
I chalk that up to, I spent a little too much time on the staff report and overthinking my conditions. Because I had that same thought today, by ordinance they asked to come through site plan review and maybe that one was overkill.
Okay.
And one, one thing I do want to add, I did not address in the, in the presentation, but maybe in the staff report, the ordinance requires a one-mile separation from any tower-
but maybe in the staff report, the ordinance requires a one-mile separation from any tower, and my understanding on projects in my years in the city is there's not really any place left. The last tower that was built in the city was at Mayor's Riverfront Park, and that one received the city planner waiver as well. About 17 or 18.
Any other questions from Commissioners? All right. So I just...
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll, we'll open the public hearing. Any comments? And, but we, you said currently the, the phone lines are not working, correct?
Correct. The phone number, the system did not work on the, the phone, or on the computer here before the meeting.
Okay. And seeing no one in the audience, I will close that public hearing. All right. Any other questions or comments before a motion? All right. Can we get a motion on proceeding with a special use permit?
I will move to approve the special use permit to construct 150-foot-tall monopole-style wireless communications tower to replace the existing lattice tower at 1516 Rockledge Court. Second.
Second.
All right, motion approved, and second, any comment or statement?
I think it's been well demonstrated by the city staff and the applicant that this is not an ideal location, but a very necessary location in weighing the planning commission's goals and outcomes that we need to evaluate on. It's, seems like a necessary evil at this point.
Any other? Yeah, I mean, I would agree, it looks like, I mean, the, the conditions for a waiver seem tailor-made for the situation. There's a pole there, it's necessary, the, the property owners happy with it, so, and the neighbors seem to be happy with it as well, or at least not concerned. So any other comments? I think we can move on to a roll call.
All right. Ardet Baumann.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Dicenzo.
Yes.
Koscheva.
Yes.
Patelko.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Swan.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
All right. Oh, that, who's that? Thank you, the applicant? Personally, I'm also glad the renderings did not include fake tree elements, I think, I think that would've looked bad. It did not seem germane, but, but now that it's done, I think I'll say, I'm, no, I think that, I think no fake tree elements are better. All right. Moving on, any other discussion or action items?
Nope.
All right. And then city planners' report.
I, I do not have a city planner report update. As of right now, there are no new applications for August. If there's any impact to the August meeting, you'll be notified. I haven't conferred with Planner Anderson if there's anything percolating I might be unaware of. And I will make a note now that since the last meeting, I did receive a resignation request from member Ian Smith. This will be his last meeting. And next week, I will work with Communications Department to put a posting for membership out there. So thank you for your time, Ian, and your, your work on the commission.
All right. Thank you. We'll say more, I guess. All right. Anything from the site plan list, or any comments or questions from folks? All right. In that case, we could move on to, again, general public comments, though, again, I'm not seeing anyone open for public comments. In that case, Commissioner Pradel, City Commission Liaison, you have the floor.
Good evening, y'all. How are you doing? I promised each meeting to update you about actions that you recommended to the full city commission. At your last meeting, there was a recommendation to approve the rezoning of the Bogan Development Properties on Vine and Burdick. I just wanted to report back that we voted to accept your recommendation. I always enjoy sharing to the commission that you are resident experts, and so I, you know, share how the vote turnout was with y'all, and share if there were any comments that you made as well. So just wanted to report back that that happened as well. If you get a chance, go to YouTube, check out our YouTube channel, and check out our last committee of the whole meeting from two days ago. We had a presentation from Rebecca Kick, our deputy city manager. She had a great presentation on the Arcadia Festival site proposed design that we're moving for, hoping to move forward with. It's a really interesting presentation, probably about 45 minutes with questions, but I think you'd be really interested to see what we have in store with that. The other part of the presentation, that same meeting, from that night, from Rebecca Kick, was what we're planning to do with that 322 Stockbridge site, which is, a lot of people know as the former DHS or Bingo Hall site that's on Stockbridge. It's a 14.97 acre plot of land, it's a pretty decent-sized plot of land, and we're targeting to create 170 units of housing on that property. And it's just a bunch of different mixed types of housing, but we're hoping to use some of our pre-approved plans and whatnot for that as well. So if you get a chance, check that part of the presentation as well, I think it's really gonna transform that site for the neighborhood. And then just an update about the city commission, we just selected our city manager search firm, RefTelus, which is a company that does nationwide searches. It was really important to the commission that we have a firm that does a nationwide search, and we don't just keep it like regionally or local, and so they're gonna be starting to work with us. I'm working on that subcommittee, as one of the three commissioners doing that work. If you have any input about the process, would love to hear from you as well. And then just a reminder, in case there's maybe any interested folks up here as well, it's city commission election year, and deadline to become a candidate is July 22nd. So if any of you have an itch to serve the city in a different capacity, or anybody listening, please make sure to learn more about how to make that happen. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Any planning commissioner comments?
Yes. So as Bobby said, I'm resigning, because I'm moving to Minneapolis, so I'll no longer, unfortunately, be eligible to serve on this board. But it's, it's really been a pleasure. I haven't been here super long, but I feel like I've learned a ton here, and it's just been really inspiring, working alongside all of you here. You're all really dedicated to making Kalamazoo a better place, and I know you all have great visions for the city, which I love, love the city, and I think it has a lot of potential. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve alongside you in making Kalamazoo a better place. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ian.
All right, and I'll say thank you as well, and as a, spent the first 25 years of my life in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, I hope you enjoy it, and I could certainly give you some recommendations for St. Paul, St. Paul restaurants. Any other commissioner comments? All right, hearing done, we can close the meeting. Thank you so much, and well done today.